You're recording it live.
Yay, okay.
Ron?
Yep, we are on.
Okay, I'd like to call this meeting to order as March 9th, it's a couple of minutes after seven. And the first we'll have is a pledge allegiance to the flag, if you'll join me with that. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We have Joshua Cole from the Tabernacle Appraisers with us, thanks for being with us tonight, and the invitation is yours, okay?
Heavenly Father, we thank you so much for this opportunity to come together and serve Galleon. And Father, I thank you for protecting us and guiding us through these pandemic times. And Father, I pray that you continue to bless and to protect the citizens of Galleon. And Father, as we speak on matters of administration and leadership, I pray that you would guide us with your Spirit, and that we would please you with the way we speak to one another in honor and respect, in Jesus' name, amen.
Thanks, we'll have roll call of council members.
Ms. Alt?
Yeah.
Mr. Botkins?
Here.
Ms. Earlston?
Here.
Dr. Fauner?
Here.
Mr. Ivy?
Here.
Mr. Richard?
Here.
Mr. Triplet?
President.
Let it be known, all seven are in attendance tonight. And next, a roll call of elected officials and Safety Service Director.
Okay, we have Merrill Larry, I know he's connecting right now, so. So, Auditor Baldinger?
I'm here.
Here.
Okay. Did you say you were here, Auditor Baldinger?
Yes, I said here, I got covered up by the mayor.
Okay, Director Blal Palmer?
Here.
Treasurer Sparks?
Here.
Safety Service Director Ward?
Okay, now we'll have we'll have the approval of the minutes of the February 23rd meeting, regular meeting. You've all had a chance to read them, do we have a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve February 23rd meeting.
I'll second that motion.
Who was that?
I'll second.
Okay, any additions or corrections? Not all in favor, say aye.
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 Well, likewise, minutes of February 23rd meeting hereby approved. Moving on to, we only have one piece of legislation tonight, it went through committee. So Julie, we have, I need a motion to approve the agenda then as presented.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
And I will second that.
Seconded by Ms. Earlston, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, the agenda has been approved as presented. Moving on to legislation, we only have one tonight, Resolution Number 2021-7, it's the first reading.
Resolution Number 2021-7, it's our resolution approving the appointment of Brian Trish to the Galleon Port Authority Board of Directors and declaring an emergency.
Here the reading of the resolution, discussion. Mayor? You're muted, I think.
He is.
We can't read your lips.
You're still muted, there you go.
There you go.
Over. This recommends Brian Trish to fill a vacant seat on the Port Authority. Brian attended today's meeting, so gee, it would be real embarrassing for us, or for me at least, if opposition to that, so. One more comment, there's few people that know more about the history of the Port Authority, why we formed it, the multiple things can be done with it than Brian, and so I was really glad that he agreed to come back in and work with the city, so that's really what I have to say in nomination, if you will.
Any other discussion?
I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules and proceed to the final reading on tonight's legislation.
I hear the motion, Dr. Fauner, to suspend the rules.
I'll second that.
The second by Mr. Richard, roll call.
Dr. Fauner?
Yes.
Mr. Richard?
Yes.
Mr. Triplet?
Yes.
Ms. Alt?
Yes.
Mr. Botkins?
Yes.
Ms. Earlston?
Yes.
Mr. Ivy?
No.
Okay, the motion to suspend the rules on
Wow. Could I ask, Mr. President, what Mr. Ivy's problem is with Brian Trish, please? I'm done fooling around with this stuff, this is serious, important to the city. Served the city for eight years, some guy who has no reason, no reason, and let's excuse me, what is the reason, Mr. Watt?
Any comments?
Oh, no comment. That'll be up on Facebook in about two minutes.
Well, it actually passed six to one, so it passed to suspend the rules. Now, moving back to the resolution, any further discussion on that?
I'd like to make a motion to pass.
Surprising at all.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to pass this resolution, I don't, what's the number, Julie?
Dash seven.
A seven.
Through the motion of Mr. Triplet, we have a second?
Second, Botkins.
Mr. Botkins, second, any further discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Triplet?
Yes.
Mr. Botkins?
Yes.
Ms. Earlston?
Yes.
Dr. Fauner?
Yes.
Mr. Ivy?
No.
Mr. Richard?
Yes.
Ms. Alt?
Yes.
Okay, the resolution passed by six to one, moving on to the next item, this is
They'll do a great job, folks, all the people witnessing, all the people like cheering for Aaron doing that, Brian's done a great job for the city, it's shameful. Has nothing to say, nothing to say, shameful. This is worse than Roberto Wade and Howard Newman. Disgusting.
Okay, other Julie, the liquor permit by Spicy Nails and Spa LLC?
Yep, this is a D3 permit, and I looked it up, and it's a spirituous liquor until 1:00 a.m., but I've heard that they're only open till 7:00, so. It's at 216A Portland Way North, it is a new permit, so it's not a renewal, and like I said, it's a D3, which is spirituous, and we have the option to request a public hearing, that's our only option, we don't approve this, more liquor control, but if we feel there's a problem, we can request a public hearing, but has to be something pretty serious that we think, so.
Julie, did we, did the chief have any comment on this?
I did not hear anything from him, and I did not check with him, I know he gets them as well, so I did not hear from him, so I would get, I think he has an opportunity to say something, he might be able to have the opportunity to say something as well differently, I don't know if he does or not, but.
You're like, yeah. So, doesn't there another business right next door to him that has a liquor permit?
Oh, the
Mexican restaurant.
Probably, yeah, El Carrasco, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. I don't know which one they got, I know there's only so many available, so I don't know which one came available, so.
Are you gonna be able to have a drink and get your nails done?
Right.
Sounds fun.
If you go early, you can probably get a mo- mo- moza or a Bloody Mary, so.
Yeah, sounds exciting.
So.
I know a woman that goes there, and I'm afraid she won't come home.
You had her all the way, find her way home.
Go pick her up, get her nails done.
Any serious comments or input on this?
No serious comments.
And then go buy a burrito, Ken, that's my thought, my idea.
Does anybody have any objections to this permit?
I really don't.
No.
Yeah, if none, we won't have to request a public hearing, and we'll move on to survey result, results discussion.
Okay.
Who is that with you, or who is that with?
I don't know, I know Kara has access to the, well, a couple people have access to the online versions, because the the Survey Monkey, that's what I was trying to come up with, the Survey Monkey, those were let's see here, in favor, or yes, was 68.92%, no, was 20.84%, and unsure was 12.25%. There was 552 that came in over Survey Monkey, and five did skip that question, it appears, so there was five not counted in that percentage there. And then of the surveys that I've gotten in-house here, we got 250 what we did, so we've got good, I have my little note here. Forty-three point two percent were yes, thirty-four point four seven, or, I'm sorry, forty-three point two percent yes, forty, or thirty-four point four percent no, and twenty-two point four percent unsure, so you have yeah, it's a little, the in-person surveys came in not quite as in leaning towards the yeses much. I have been putting them in to, I probably should have got with Kara and loaded them all into a Survey Monkey, so they could always all work together, but I made an access program that I'm putting them in, I've got all the unsures and the nos in, and most of the questions are on, on what's going to happen with the parks for the 20 years, they all want to know that, they all want to know, you know, the operation, how's it gonna be operated? That's, you know, even, so a lot of the yeses want to know the operation, even some of the yeses that I've read through, and they want, they're in favor of it, but they want the freeze money, not to hurt the parks, they don't want to take that money from the parks, so they're still in favor of it, but they don't want, so, so yeah, I'm still loading that in, because my computer wouldn't work from home when I was sick, because for some reason it wouldn't connect, so, but so, but those are some of the results, I'll have the, all the questions probably to you, can have all those to you. A lot of people thought we should be working on getting jobs in the grocery store, that was a big one in there, a lot of grocery store, grocery store, we need grocery store, we need jobs. And they all want to know the fixed costs, and what's gonna happen if it doesn't, if it doesn't make it, who's, who's on the hook, they all want to know that. But basically, a lot of the questions that everybody, you know, it's the same, I didn't see any real new anything that stood out, you know, as different kind of questions. So I did, well, one person sent like a letter, that wasn't even a survey, that I didn't even count, they want to know the cost, cost per square foot, and this was an interesting question, is there a need for this facility, or is there an effort to try and create a need? They want to know how much deterioration will occur in the parks over 20 years, and then a lot of people want to know about taxes, is there going to be any new taxes, you know, if we can't maintain the parks, sorry, my window's open. So, and someone wanted to know if it would be incorporated into the City of Galleon for taxpayers, it's already in the City of Galleon, so, but, but yeah, those were a rundown of a lot of the questions that I entered into the, I got entered into the access program, so.
When I talked to you earlier, Julie, it sounded like there were a lot of really good questions that you were getting compiled, so.
Yes, yes, I'm, yeah, I was going to sort them out yet by whether dealing with the infrastructure, because there was infrastructure, you know, who's paying for that, there was infrastructure questions, there's operational questions, and there's funding questions, so. So, yeah, so, and then that leads into how do you guys want to do, you know, when do we want to do meetings, do we, how do, how do we want to do meetings? So.
My opinion on the meeting is, until we find out if this is legal, then we have a meeting.
Hey, Thomas, could you comment on that, please?
Sure, I'd be happy to, Mayor. What I would share is this, and this is something which members of council know, because I sent out an email to council members over the weekend, and I've had the opportunity, which I've enjoyed, to speak with council members individually since I'm certain council members, and what that shared was what my office has been involved with, which was to answer two sets of questions related primarily to the, not only the Freeze Center, but the funding strategy that was presented in a committee meeting some weeks ago. And at that time, what I did was to create two sets of questions, and I had one dealing with the city's involvement, one dealing with the Freeze Foundation's involvement, and since that time, what I've been involved with is delving into each and every one of those questions to make sure that this is something we can do. At the same time, I will tell you that the Freeze Foundation is doing the same thing. My last conversation with the Freeze Foundation was this afternoon, and they have yet to receive a response to their inquiries about the same situation. So, it's not to say that this couldn't happen exactly as proposed, but I can't tell you for sure that it can. Those council members with whom I've had the opportunity to speak, I think, I think we had a clear exchange of ideas, and, and I think they understood, I presented the various questions that I had, and, and the steps I had taken to verify from the City of Galleon's perspective that we can do this. As I said, the Freeze Foundation is doing the same thing. If either the Freeze Foundation or the City of Galleon get legal counsel, if we find out that this is something which has to be, it can be done, but it has to be changed, or if it can't be done at all, that's obviously something that is important to having you make a decision which is best for the City of Galleon, and that would obviously be furnishing that information to you right away. So that's what I shared over the weekend with all of you, and that work continues. To date, I have interfaced with five different attorneys in various places to work on that. What, what's really at issue here is that we have something wonderful at the City of Galleon, which is the Freeze Foundation, it's a tremendous bequest of the city that result, has already resulted in wonderful opportunities for not only the city, but the schools and students. But it's also very unique, there are a few Ohio cities that have something like this. So questions of this nature involving what would be a very sizable, for Galleon standards, a very sizable public improvement, not public improvement, but investment project. You know, there's not a lot of places to look to, so this kind of work takes a little bit more time, a little bit more effort, a little bit more diligence than some other kinds might. And as I said, the Freeze Foundation hasn't got their answer back yet either, so obviously, we're pursuing a similar strategy, so that's kind of where I'm at.
President, could I?
To talk about it, or to have a meeting, but what I, all I can say is what I shared in my communication with you is that I can't promise you that what would be discussed would be exactly what the project could look like.
Anybody else have any comments on this?
Mr. President, I, I agree with Mr. Triplet, I think that until this or those questions are resolved, a conversation is, for lack of a better term, a kind of a wasted time, because we don't really know what that will be like at that point in time. So I don't really think it would be beneficial to not only the council, but also to the citizens to have a discussion about this right now, until questions are fully answered.
Mr. President, may I make a comment, please?
Sure enough, Mayor.
Didn't really, I mean, I'm prone to giving long answers, so woe be it to me to be critical of Thomas, I asked kind of a straight question, straight part of a question. On the issue that Mark asked, can we do it? It is clear from several legal angles, and you're never going to get every lawyer in the state who has knowledge about this stuff to weigh in on, but from the point of view of whether the city can use non-taxpayer revenue, that would be freeze proceeds, it looks like that part of the legal question is relatively clear. So can the city do it? Yeah, if you want to. The closer issue, and this is something that the city will look at, but mostly so as to their beneficiary relationship in the, with the Freeze Foundation, is whether or not they can issue, excuse me, they can purchase this debt at something as a non-market rate. But the question of whether the city can use taxpayers' funds to do this project, I don't think that's even a, I don't, I think that's relatively well decided. In fact, that's why the Port Authority was chosen as a way to do development, is that it can do these kinds of projects that involve a business aspect, but, but are also of a governmental function, so. I'm, I'm gonna stop at that point, but the if y'all don't want to do it, then fine, you know, don't do it, nerve it up, vote no, we won't, we're done talking about it. But the notion of waiting until there's some sort of clarity on the legal side, unfortunately, it seems like to me that that's a way to delay it, and to avoid answering other questions about the capital side of this that could be answered while these legal issues are being sorted out. So I know a delay tactic when I see it, if you don't want to do it, then just don't delay, don't let the thing die out on the side of the road, just vote the dang thing down, so. Come on, this not wanting to answer the questions of the port, I spent two and a half hours, and Mr. Mr. Trish spent two and a half hours, by the way, sitting in a meeting that some people didn't want him to be part of, but a lot of time was spent, and a level of just pushing this out until we get a legal opinion, you know, heck, we can do that all day, and hit the ball back and forth across the net, I'd really like to see this either moved forward or shot down. So thank you, Carl, for letting me make those comments.
Ms. Earlston? Can I, can I respond to that, please?
Okay, first, okay.
Uh, first of all, the mayor's in privy probably too, I suspect he's not, to the email that I sent to council members where some of that was laid out, so I didn't reiterate that, because I didn't feel the need to do that. And I couldn't agree more, and in fact, that communication and what I said just a few minutes ago are consistent, and that is, I'm not recommending you don't talk about this, I'm not recommending that at all. That is a purely practical question that has nothing to do with the legalities of the situation. There is some degree of clarity on part of the questions that, that were initially brought to bear because of the proposal. The mayor's correct, part of those involved the operation of the City of Galleon, whether the City of Galleon can be involved with this. That information was obtained from our outside council that also served as our bond council. So we went through the steps to get that, and it's already answered if it is as being proposed, but that isn't the whole set of questions. So again, I'm not, I'm not recommending, I'm not saying stop, don't do this, don't talk about it, I'm just saying that it is, and let me say one other thing, I think this is important, I don't set out to, and the Freeze Foundation didn't set out, because as I said before, they're doing this too, didn't set out to answer my own questions, what I do is I contact legal counsel that, or experts in this field, and I pose my questions to them first, and I say, these are the questions that come to my mind. I realize I don't have a background in every single area of the law, and as I said before, the Freeze Foundation is a very unique animal, and it's in a relationship with the City of Galleon, is unique. I said, these are my concerns, this is my set of questions, are these legitimate? Is this something that you would, in your practice, look at to answer before you do this? And they said, yes, then and only then will I proceed to that next step. As I said before, the Freeze Foundation is working with KeyBank, getting answers to those same questions. That doesn't mean you can't talk about the operation, as Tom, I think, said a minute ago, talk about the, the capital expenditures, about the, the building itself, about how it would operate, and that kind of thing, absolutely. This is not an admonition or a piece of legal advice not to discuss this, it's simply a statement that my office has to make to you, that just let you know what the status is of the work that we're doing, that I'm doing, that's it, that's simple.
Ms. Earlston?
I think he answered my question. I think there's just a lot more than just how it affects the city just right now. Correct, Mr. Palmer, it could be something long-term that we need to be concerned about or aware of, or to move forward.
I guess I don't understand the question, Mrs. Earlston, are you asking if there's something that may affect the city? You're about this?
Well, with the, not the city, I guess, but the Freeze, that we need to be very careful about that. We know it's okay, maybe on our end, but for the Freeze, we need to make sure that that is
I mean, in the
for them to use.
Right, in the simplest terms, I just can't answer that question right now, because I don't have the information. That's what the research is, that's what, that's what the request to the financial advisor for the Freeze Foundation is about, we're trying to get to the bottom of that answer, that's what you do, when you're presented with a plan, you look at the plan, you do your diligence on the plan, you pick it apart, that's not, you don't pick it apart because you want to pick it apart, you pick it apart because that's your job.
Dr. Fauner?
Yes, I know some of us participated in the Chamber of Commerce question and answer sessions that they had two last Wednesday. I found, I attended the, the morning session, I thought the questions were excellent and well answered, as well, I mean, that's everything that I could have hoped a committee of the whole would have been like. It was, the questions were thoughtful, it wasn't a Facebook free-for-all, and I don't know if the second session mirrored the first, I would imagine that there were some differences, but I, my question is, how did anyone that attended feel about are they any more comforted with the idea, having heard those answers? Mark, I know you attended.
I did, Doc, and I still, my biggest concern is operational costs, and I still have yet to get an answer on how they're gonna pay to operate this, utilities, maintenance, the whole operational cost, if they're gonna be at a loss for three years.
Okay.
Uh, Mr. President?
Yes.
Hey, at a public meeting lasted two and a half hours, Mr. Trish was there. Um, that was discussed quite a bit, and I offered the idea that the Port Authority and city government representatives um form a an ad hoc problem solving group and uh begin to answer those questions. I share many of those questions. Um, but not having a a discussion about the op. My view is that we should proceed with a discussion about the remaining questions on the capital side. We should send as city government a signal to the port about the kinds of conditions under which we would provide five million dollars uh worth of of um a a request to the to the Freeze Foundation to buy five million dollars worth of bonds. There, the issue of infrastructure, where this whole thing got kinda shaky, uh, there's been a lot of progress made on that. I don't wanna spend a lot of time on that. There seem to be other non-tax, Galleon tax revenue sources of of money to build that infrastructure. Okay, I think everyone involved, however, recognizes that the operating plan, such as it is right now, has um a lot of dots to connect. And so what I think is most important, what I would hope we could do at some point in the near future, maybe not tonight, is agree to have a discussion, iron out the remaining issues on how you're gonna fund the building. My guess is it's probably five, two among the seven of you. There's a couple of you that are just not gonna be persuadable. Um, I think that it's probably a closer call on this operating side. And so I would really think that that needs to be worked on. And I would like a committee, a council member, to serve in this ad hoc committee to ask those questions. Like, for instance, the operating pro forma assumes there'll be a hundred percent tax abatement. It's like, wow, you know, is that, okay, you know, where did that come from? So that would be one example. There, as Mark mentioned, utilities, how are those going to be funded? Where's that startup capital gonna come from? Uh, the operating capital, all those things are are they're good questions, they're fairly obvious questions, and they need answered before the city puts down any commitment. But what I've, what I upset me a few minutes ago is that we're just gonna stop until we have all the answers. But you're just, that's not gonna happen. The city is going to have to, council is gonna have to participate in getting those answers unless we don't wanna do it. It's just how it is. So thank you for letting me make those comments. I I would prefer to proceed with the committee of the whole to iron out the construction, capital issues, uh, and then um come up with some plan. Maybe it's not this uh ad hoc group I'm suggesting, but some plan so that skeptics and proponents, elitists and common people can sit down and talk through this thing instead of this um sort of across my arms and uh and have a standoff on the various sides of this issue. That's not constructive at all. In fact, it's obviously the last month been really destructive, destructive. So thanks, Carl.
So what you're proposing is to have a committee as a whole? Is that what you're proposing, Mayor?
I think this this issue, I mean, it's it's trumped up, it's eleven million, twelve million dollar project. It deserves three or four hours of your time, I would think.
Okay.
Or, you know, an hour or two to talk about the capital. I think if if you give folks who wanna get this done a couple more weeks to work out the details of the infrastructure, you might be surprised at how complete uh that. Um, it's not an equation now, I know that for sure, but we might be able to get that uh to uh equals to something that can happen with the right mix of state funds. Uh, and um, so I'm kind of encouraged about that. Operating plan worries me a lot, and I think it will take oh dozens of hours of some committed people, both on city government and on the Port Authority side to to answer each other, all of each other's questions. So, yeah, I am suggesting we proceed. Um, or drop it, man. I'm I was, I'm one of those people, I've been seven years on this. There are people complaining about two years they've been working on this. Hmm, we've been working at this for five, six, seven years. So I don't wanna quit till we get to the end of the road. So I I'm passionate about picking it up, council doing their job, or just tell the Port Authority, hell, no. Just tell them, no. Any get out of here. But this not have meetings until all the answers are are given? How in the hell you think the answers are gonna be, the question's gonna be asking answered by not meeting? Silly. It's almost like voting against Brian Trish.
Any of the council members like to comment at this point? Uh, Dr. Foner?
Yes, I think um Ms. Earlston's proposal um in the beginning to divide uh committees into the various uh subsets is what I'm hearing uh the mayor say is the best proposal. So um you know, and I think that was also one of the discussion topics tonight is committee of the whole. I don't um and how we are gonna organize those. So I am also in favor. Uh, I I agree with uh the mayor that if we wait until uh every question and fear is allayed, um, then it's not gonna get done. Um, uh, that's, that's, that is a stalling tactic. Um, I am um for for this project fraught with uh uncertainties as it is. Um, uh, I I want to continue the meeting. So I think, again, um, Ms. Earlston's idea of of dividing this into subsets is uh still on what I would like to see.
Thank you. Other council members' comments?
Well, I think we can continue to talk about it. I I mean, we gotta have answers somehow. So we might as well continue to talk about it.
You know, I think that if we have a uh committee of the whole meeting and um Mr. Miller and um the the Port Authority is there to answer our questions, uh, again, uh, I felt like the uh Chamber of Commerce uh uh video was extremely useful. And I, you know, I'm kind of in the boat that the mayor, I've been hearing about this for five years. Um, uh, and I know that some of you are brand new to it, and you need to come on, you know, get up to speed, as it as it were. And I'm not trying to shove this through, but I I think that um uh, if we were to have a question and answer session, um, lo- like the Chamber of Commerce with those uh people attending amongst us, it it would be very helpful and answer a lot of things. Um, again, third time, divide it up into sections like Ms. Earlston proposed. She had three, I believe, uh, sections and just confine our answers to that. Um, if you want, I I think if you get public input from Facebook, um, that's hours and hours and going off on tangents. Um, I just feel like that's gonna be uh difficult to corral. Not that I don't um want uh questions from the public. I think the survey was of of a a good first move. Um, but I I think we should schedule uh committee meetings.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Mr. President, I'm sorry. Tammy, go ahead if you like.
Um, no, that's it, that's I'll say, so Dr. Foner, I think that kind of to tie in that public piece for those questions, um, Julie has been, she's had access to the survey results and has been compiling kind of the questions into different categories. So I think rather than having kind of that wild Facebook conversation, we do have almost eight, we have eight hundred responses from the community. So Julie has kind of gone through and and categorized them and made them. So I think anyone who wanted to make a, have a question or make a comment has already done so um in that way. So she can kind of pool those. So if we're having a a meeting to discuss the operations, she can look at her list of questions and see, you know, which ones kind of relate to those and which ones, did we, did she have the most up? I think that that would be a beneficial way. I liked that about the chamber meeting also, that they came with questions already prepared. Um, so that way they kind of knew what it was gonna look like, and also um it was pretty organized. They did take questions towards the end, but um I watched the app, the evening session. Um, so I think that we have a lot of good questions I've seen through the online submission. So I think we can use those and kind of go through um and break them out into however many meetings we're wanting to have.
Great.
That's just my idea on that.
Good idea.
Just to add to that, too, Julie has also um combined, you know, it sounds like there would be like nine bazillion questions, but Julie's able combine a lot of the questions that are the same. So then when you break it down into operations and on dang and um infrastructure, you end up with not as many questions as you would probably imagine by the time she, you know, a lot of people have the same questions.
Right, you'd probably have less than ten on each each item. Yeah. By the time you combine them.
Yeah, and I'm sure a lot of those are questions that we have as well. So, um, so, yeah, that's, and you know, you know, I've also been talking with Mr. Palmer about this and um starting with operations, even though knowing things could be a little different. Um, you know, that would be maybe a little bit safer place to start than the funding. So that could be our first our first meeting could be on operations, then maybe infrastructure could be second, and then we could move on to the financing last.
I know it'd be agreeable, but in when that idea was discussed this morning at the Port Authority meeting, I'll paraphrase the, they have spent a lot of hours on the facility. They're really close to uh, they wanna sign a contract with the contractor that would be the design build. Um, uh, contractor. So the detail that is there on the capital side is very complete. There was a propose, I'm not sure how far it got out, but the beginnings of the sources and uses on the operating side, uh, Mr. Earlston, that's gosh, I'll make everybody mad here before the night's over. That needs a lot of work. And so what I think, I would, I would argue that if uh, in fairness to the group who's putting it together, ten times, make up a number, ten times, a thousand times more has been spent on working on how are we gonna fund building this? And and really not as much time put on the operating. So I think we might, if we were to have a meeting Thursday, talk operating, we probably all would be disappointed in how many gaps were still there. So I would, you know, it's it's a, it's council's meeting, it's your prerogative, but I would would um suggest that if we went to the strengths of the port's proposal, uh, it is in their thinking and the development of the building itself and much, a lot less on the operating side. It'd be too easy, it'd be like taking candy from a baby, and that'll make them mad. I'll fire them up to to work on it, but there's just a lot of issues on the operating side um that I think we need, that all of us on this call and and all the citizens need to get comfortable with. So I I think, anyway, long end, I'd like to go uh let them make their presentation on the how they're gonna fund the building and then work through to the how you propose to pay for infrastructure and then how you, how do you propose to operate it? But I think you'd put them in a disadvantage if we went right to operate. So thanks for letting me say all that, Tammy.
Anyone else?
I have one.
Oh, go ahead, Ken.
Tom Palmer, I've called you twice, and you have yet to return a call to me on issues. I'd like to know why you haven't talked to me.
Are are you serious, Ken? When, when and how did you call me?
I lied to you, Tom. I called you twice, and you said you wanted to talk to individuals, so I called twice, and you haven't called me yet.
Well, Ken, I doubt if there's I I doubt if there's any other council member or person on this call or this meeting who would say they've had similar issues, Ken. I I, did you call me at home? Did you call me on my cell phone? Did you call me at work?
Well, there was a number on iPad to call.
Well, it may have been wrong, Ken, because I I have had calls from uh council members in the last forty-eight hours. Uh, you know me, Ken, you know that I would return a call to you.
I know you play the organ at church, but you you could call me, you know, you call me whenever we're out this here. We don't need to talk here. I'd like to talk to you.
Well, Ken, give me, you're gonna have to give me your number, so hang on afterwards, so I have it, or I get it from Julie.
Julie's got it.
Yeah.
No, I'm not mad. I just disappointed. I didn't, you said you talked to people about a subject. You haven't talked to me.
Well, you're no more disappointed, I mean, you're no more disappointed than I am, because I
Okay. I'm not mad about it. I just like to know, that's all.
Okay. Yeah.
Thank you.
Mr. Triplett?
Well, I just got a question for the mayor. Tom, since you were in that meeting this morning, and with five million dollars from the freeze, how close are they to having the full amount to have the building built?
You're a no BS guy. I fancy myself as a no BS guy. I think they're a million and a half lacking. But I don't think the million and a half will fall in place. That would, you could go and add them up. You say it's more than a million and a half. I'm relatively confident, y'all, that there's some state money that's gonna be brought into bear to assist in addition to the state capital bill. But if it doesn't come into place, we're millions, plural, short. So I think we're, I think we're still chasing a million and a million and a half. And I want to be a friendly, happy guy that I am with that, with the group in this committee I suggested in drilling them's not the right word, but really serious, like we, you know, we've got we've got three or four chunks of money that we still gotta chase down. Now, I hope that answers your question. I do think the argument that you'll hear that until we, the city, commits our money, a lot of the the other, what you might describe as lower hanging fruit's gonna stay right there on the tree. So I think there is an argument to be made. I really, I believe, in spite of a lot of questions I have, that if the city can see its way to make that um commitment of freeze funds, that you'll see it easier to raise that last three million and 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 I'm most I I still think we're chasing a million and a half, Mark, but
Okay, thank
eight.
Thanks.
Yeah, I hope that's, try to be a straightforward answer. Hell, I'll say one more thing, Carl, if you'll indulge me. I'm not absolutely in love with the building. If we were out buying a car, I'd say, man, I really like that one better than this one. Uh, there's things I'm not like absolutely uh enthralled with. But I think on balance, it's um uh, it can be a really tremendous asset for the city and not as a travel and tourism attraction. It can be a really cool thing for people who live in Galleon in the Galleon area. So that's where I'm, I I I really believe strongly that um if we can build this, as you, we'd had a conversation, non-tax revenue. Mr. Triplett had mentioned to me, if we can build this with a lot, without a lot of non-tax revenue or any non-tax revenue, then maybe it's a, it's a good thing to do. So I'm I'm really trying to follow that as a, if you will, a guiding light that, let's build this with as little of no income tax money, as little of non-tax revenue as possible. So I overanswered it there at the end, Mark, but I think we're chasing a million and a half.
Okay, another thing, i- if, you know, beans, it's a city.
Okay. Another thing, i- if, you know, being it's a city and you don't, the city doesn't like something about this, it can't be changed?
Well, I think that's why I really liked what the chamber did. But I had observed to other of the council members, if you go back and watch those two hours or you think to yourself, the one you watched, city council's role, the importance of city council's role was really not amplified. And so we are the gatekeeper. It's not that somebody in a meeting today said, oh, it's all about credit. The council doesn't want credit. I don't think you want to get blamed for a bad idea, though. That's what I said. So I think, um, that the, the city has a, a, a essential gatekeeper role. I think asking questions is exactly what we want to do. Few of us have laid five billion dollars down on anything in our entire personal professional life. It's a big decision. And that's why I'm in, in, interested in, in pursuing what Tammy's saying, break out the subject matter areas and pursue them kind of step by step. Uh, and at the end of the day, it's, if it's too big a project for your judgment, then it's too big a project, but, um, anyway, I think it's, um, I think it's something that we can do with, um, the idea of non-tax revenue. That's kind of the goal right now. I hope that answered that not overtalked.
Anyone else have anything?
I didn't see on the agenda under this, uh, heading, we're already at other business, was to schedule, uh, committee of the whole, uh, meetings. So I say, let's try and get the first one scheduled.
Okay. Any ideas when you wish to have this?
Do you have? Any, do you, what, with the schedule in mind that we have? You know, I had reached out, Chad. And we had discussed Thursday, um, but we also discussed, uh, that we would be talking about the, um, um, that we were going to be discussing operations.
But Tammy, it doesn't matter. I think if we can pull everybody together, Thursday, I think you'll be disappointed. Maybe I'm wrong, disappointed in how many questions that I'll have to circle back and get you an answer for. Isn't that the new word? When you don't know the answer, new phrase, you circle back. So I think, um, if we, whatever the subject matter, if, uh, I would say that Tuesday and Wednesday, those are the two finance and economic development committee meetings. Those would, they're already set up for uh, three sevenths of the councils to be there. So anyway, if we can't do it Thursday, I, I'll promise you, Doc Fowler, I'll be submitting it through Julie to be put on the agenda Tuesday night. And I'd almost promise you unless I, I get, get hit with a bad health thing, I'll want to put it back on Wednesday night for finance. Because this decision is sort of sitting in the, and not in the way of, but kind of, um, it's the next step that council needs to take in terms of major city business. So anyway, we don't do it Thursday, what Tuesday and Wednesday's agenda.
What's about?
You're recommending.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
You recommend we do it during a, either an economic or a finance committee meeting? Mr. Mayor, is that your recommendation that we schedule it for then?
I'd like to do it Thursday, but if that presents a problem for Port Authority members due to shortness of time and such, uh, and, and, but I know we're all scheduled to be, uh, I know a lot of council members who aren't on those two key committees, uh, sit in and witness. It's getting louder here in the background. I realize that. But the, I, so I think, I'd, I'll, I'd like to do it Thursday, but if it's Tuesday and Wednesday of next week, at least back to Doc Fowler saying, or point that we need to keep this moving, that it would certainly do that. So if not Thursday, I'm, I'd be excited about next, uh, Tuesday.
Okay. Any preference here? You've heard the mayor express his feelings on what day?
Axe waving.
I have a question. Okay, Tom. Go ahead.
Um, is it possible that we could turn Tuesday and Wednesday into committee of the whole meetings?
Don't see why not.
Your Palmer?
Uh, I have a conflict, but that doesn't mean you go right, go right ahead.
Well, I, I, I think that's the way to solve the problem of limited, um, participation. Uh, you know, we're just going to have a, a lengthy agenda and the first, uh, the first item on that agenda should be, uh, Port Authority that gives them, um, a little more lead time, gives them a weekly time instead of two days. Thursday's just not, I, I can't see that happening personally, but, um, I'd be very happy to, uh, uh, Tuesday and Thursday commit, um, a fair amount of time in the evening to do that.
Hey. Other comments?
Well, Mr. President, I'm sorry, Mark.
No, go ahead, Mike.
I was just going to s- suggest, uh, uh, Doc, um, you might want to take and put the, uh, meeting of the whole, uh, for the, the founda- or the freeze center, maybe at your end of that, uh, agenda for those two nights. Uh, because if, if not, the discussion's probably going to be fairly long. And with, if you have any other business, uh, that might be quicker, you know what I'm saying? It's
Yes. Um, we could even, uh, at least on Wednesday, start the meeting at six thirty, uh, for the finance or, uh, economic, what am I talking about here? Uh, finance on Wednesday, we could start at six thirty and then committee of the whole at seven. Julie?
The only problem that does, because it's already been advertised, that makes that a special meeting. So
That's fine. Okay, then we'll just keep it. We won't make any time changes, but we can advertise a committee of the whole following the regular finance and regular, um, economic development committees.
Yes, yes.
That's good, that's a good suggestion, Michael.
If, uh, Wednesday, Gail, I think will be, there's going to be other stuff. Tuesday night, I, off the top of my head, I think that will be relatively lean in terms of other court matters. Wednesday, I know Wednesday's got a, it, that, you know, about this time, things start to mount for the finance committee agenda. We have a few things I know were that will be important, not quite hot, urgent, but important. So I think on Wednesday. Yeah, that's a, that's a finance. Yeah.
Yeah, that's not a showstopper.
Oh, which is going to be a little longer night. Maybe we've got some, some other non-freeze business to, to work on in the finance areas. What I was trying to point out.
Yeah, I know, I know. We got probably about four, maybe five items on there that, uh, for, for Wednesday that we need to get, uh, get to, uh, council meeting, the last council meeting of this month.
Right.
Important. I don't have all the details, but, uh, I know we got at least four or five items on there that.
So are you thinking about just scheduling it for Wednesday then of next week? Or are you still thinking?
Tuesday and Wednesday. It's just that, what they're saying, I believe, is that the economic development of regular meeting will be fairly concise. And then we can have a committee of the whole following that. Wednesday, the finance committee might take a little longer, but still have another committee of the whole following the regular finance. Is that, am I stating that correctly?
Did a good job of, of organizing my thoughts, Doc. Thank you.
And, uh, I think, uh, Chad, Chad would be available for both those nights, so.
Okay.
Is that Mr. Watkins?
Yeah. Uh, are we still on for, uh, streets, Tom, Thursday night?
Yes.
Okay, okay.
We'll have, unless something goes haywire in the next couple of days, uh, that list, that initial list of, of, um, uh, you know, paving targets, paving projects, start to narrow that. Uh, again, I'd like to get that done early this year, so we aren't doing that paving when the big ODOT job comes to town.
Are we talking sidewalks this Thursday or just streets?
But I think we would like to get some direction on which ones, uh, we try to take that. So yeah, both, both the sidewalk targets on that CDBG money and, uh, the, uh, the, uh, two thousand and twenty-one, uh, local paving program.
Okay, thank you.
See it Thursday. We have, we have, uh, parks tomorrow, so I'll talk to you at that, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
So is it agreeable with everybody to have a economic development meeting at six thirty followed by a council, is it a large?
No, it has to be a second unless you want it to be a special meeting. And then the
Carl, we can't change the time. So everything starts at seven as usual with committee of the whole after the meetings.
So that's pretty concise. We can have it seven and seven thirty. So be right on time, have the uh, economic development right at seven. And then seven thirty, do the committee of the whole. And I don't know how long the finance would take. So if that would be the seven and seven forty-five or I'll have to see. I don't, I haven't seen any items for that, so I'll have to.
Agreeable with everybody?
Yes.
That's fine.
Okay. I guess that takes care of the next item of business on there then. I committed the whole schedule. Uh, moving on to other businesses as far as the committee meetings, who wants to start? It was mentioned tomorrow night is parks. Is that right, Mr. Rebbie? Seven o'clock?
Yes, yes.
The streets, right?
Streets of Thursday night, yeah, seven.
Okay, and we discussed Tuesday and Wednesday of next week. How about any others then?
The next Thursday is the police.
Okay.
Yeah.
Is that it then? Rest of this month? Okay, for auditor, Gail.
Yeah, I have nothing additional tonight.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Tracy Sparks?
Uh, I sent out the, uh, uh, you just sent out the financial statement and I signed off on, uh, the treasures report with, uh, April finished up to, um, there is like nineteen million, seven hundred and eighty-three thousand in there, um, that we have. Um, I always want to review the electric fund. We had two, two, uh, big electric bills come out and we're still at fi- four million. So we're doing pretty good there. The only one I saw in the sewer, we're not too bad, but the, uh, the water is getting kind of low, so we might want to look at that. I don't know. So we lost about a hundred thousand dollars, a little over a hundred thousand in there. So, um, need to have three months worth of bills in there and it's, uh, it's getting pretty low. So just, uh, just want to know, I don't, I'm not sure if we talked about it. I didn't attend the, uh, other meetings with the, uh, utilities. So, um, and I don't know where we're at, um, otherwise. So that's all I got.
Hey, Laura, Roger Palmer?
Nothing tonight, Carl. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Luger?
Take it quick. You've listened to a lot of what I've had to say tonight. Just go back to what Rod was saying. Uh, I, I agree with him. It's important to note in all three of those utility funds that, um, what, basically speaking, half of our debt is paid in February. So, uh, February was a, a high cost month. Uh, expenses did exceed revenue, uh, but it's largely because the, uh, uh, the semi-annual debt payments. Uh, Rod's absolutely right. We have to keep a close eye on, uh, how quickly, if we, if we, uh, can use that word, how quickly we can get that, uh, water fund balance to rebound. It's going to be slow throughout this year, uh, but I assure you, we're keeping an eye on it. And, uh, you know, I think it's just, it, it, uh, about the water fund. Other than that, it's, uh, we're just having all kinds of fun. If you give me one second, we spent about forty minutes, we as in the service director, myself, uh, at the regular civil service commission meeting yesterday, uh, talking with them about what types of characteristics, what types of questions, what type of candidate we're going to try to find for, uh, the police chief. So, you know, that's a, I expect for sure an internal hire, but I think some of the things, some of the issues that would make for good interview questions and sort out, uh, the various lieutenants that are, uh, interested in becoming chief, uh, I think that's a real positive thing. So that will maybe in Tammy's committee, you know, there might be reason to talk a little bit about the timing of the chief replacement. And, um, so anyways, that's, that's something in the area of, uh, that will make a big change. Those of us who've lived here most of our life can say that, that the, the temperament, uh, the, the philosophy, if you will, of the police chief has a lot to do with the temperament and the way our police force conducts its business. So it becomes a real important, uh, issue, a real important decision that'll be made this spring. So that's something other than freeze center or utility bills that, that I could talk about, but it's, it's on our minds on a daily basis. So thanks. Thanks, Carl. Yep.
Okay. Anybody else have anything?
Hey, uh, Mr. President, uh, I'd like to ask, uh, the mayor if he would, uh, comment about the SCAT, um, money that we received. Uh, I don't know if everybody heard his, um, Monday evening, um, discuss, or comment.
Yeah. Hey, thanks, Mike. What I would say is that, um, um, when you, when you're using grants to help fund a capital project, sometimes it takes a little longer. We've been working with SCAT since SCAT was, uh, selected as the county transit provider to come into the depot. Uh, ODOT most sort of pushed them back a year or so, so we patiently, or not so patiently, waited another year. And they have been, uh, 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 notified and they're going to work through uh, the grant agreement with ODOT. So what you'll see this year is the sixty thousand that council, uh, designated for the depot going into the second floor and approximately eighty thousand of federal slash state funds going in, uh, to be the headquarters for the, for the Seneca Crawford area transit. So, um, it's pretty on the outside. I would like to think by a year from now, it'll be renovated and I, I don't know, pretty will describe it, but it'll certainly be functional and, uh, breathing on its own, uh, uh, you know, we won't have to be pushing, uh, oxygen in to keep it alive. So thanks for asking, Mike. It's, uh, fans of the depot renovation are going to feel real good by the end of the year, early next year.
Any other question? Julie?
Um, I just want to finalize this, uh, agenda for tomorrow's meeting. Um, I know I have from Aaron, I have the East Park Ball Field, the Dog Park. I did have, uh, Mr. Rich Henry wanted to talk about a footbridge at Amens, Amex. I didn't know if you wanted that on there. Um, and then mayor, did you want to talk about the freeze fund projects? I didn't know if you wanted that on there. You're muted again.
I think that some of the freeze of fun projects, we'll have a list of projects that money was dedicated for last year that we didn't spend, sort of COVID related. We want to get those projects built this year. And then there'll be a list that in, that really, uh, so overlay some of Aaron's, uh, concerns, uh, allocation for sort of overlay some of Aaron's, uh, concerns, uh, allocation for Dog Park, what, talk about if it's enough, and then some of the details of the improvements at East Park, so.
Okay.
I, I think we'll have a, we may even have to narrow our list of Freeze projects if other qualified applicants wanna, want to do something, so. That should be a good committee meeting, and then on Friday is where the Freeze Advisory Committee would meet, make some recommendations and then kick it back to council to, uh, to get the formal request over to the foundation.
Okay, great, thank you for helping me finish up the agenda, I'll get it out.
Thanks.
Anything else? No, I don't have anything, so do we have a motion to adjourn, Mr. Triplett? Triplett made the motion and we have a second by?
I will second it.
Mrs. Elston, uh, favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Likewise, meeting hereby adjourned at eight twelve PM, thank you all.
I've given you a call.
Okay.